Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, September 17th, 2020, for the Albany City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Alyssa Mills of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate underground rules set for this forum. These ground rules are posted in Eventbrite. Candidates are not permitted to display campaign buttons, T-shirts, signs, Zoom backgrounds, et cetera, in order to maintain neutrality. We are recording tonight's forum and the session will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org through voters edge dot org slash C A, with links on our social media accounts at L W V B A E. This will be the forum for the Albany City Council. There are four candidates running for this position. They are Preston Jordan, Erin Tiedemann, Janelle Gary, and Todd Abbott. On your ballot, you will be able to choose three candidates out of the four. Now let's go over a few ground rules. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper will signal candidates with the green colored window, which will count down the seconds from two minutes to 15 seconds to go when it will turn yellow, and then red when the full two minutes is up. As people signed up via Eventbrite, they could submit written questions. If you have additional questions, you may type those in by clicking the Q and A icon. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them to the moderator. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one minute for a closing statement. Now let's begin with our first person, first candidate. Sorry, with Todd, Todd Abbott.
All right, well, first off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I think we all understand how important this sort of forum is, and I very much appreciate the effort. I want to start by introducing myself as what I'm calling a pragmatic progressive. That means that I support the progressive agenda, but I recognize that sometimes progress needs to be instrumental, and that it's a mistake to have the perfect be the enemy of the good, even though there are times, of course, you need to put your foot down and hold out for the last 10%. But I'm running as a problem solver. My entire history, from my degree in philosophy, managing restaurants, moaning my own business, involvement with the Chamber of Commerce and with the Parks and Recreation Mission, has been about problem solving, problem solving, about understanding positions, explaining positions, and then engaging in discussion and coming up, listening to all the parties, all the perspectives, and coming up with a solution that balances all of these. There are three things I want you to remember about me right now. First off, I have over 14 years of experience in local business community, which that level of understanding of the business community, we haven't had on council since the late great Jewel Akawachi served on council in 2012. And I think that in our current environment, as we work through the pandemic and then as we recover, that perspective is going to be even more important than normal. As far as having an agenda, the only agenda I would say that I have is, I knew that the mail was going to come and the dog is going to bark, okay, is that to increase communication and transparency in government. We need to get our residents more engaged in local government, and I think we do that by proactively reaching out and communicating and bringing them into the process. And finally, I have a plan that I feel very strongly about to increase diversity in city government. Diversity, I believe, is strength, and we need all the strength we can get, and I want to move very aggressively to increase diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janelle Gary.
Thank you for this opportunity to be on this platform. Hi, my name is Janelle Gary, and I bring the residents of Albany an opportunity to forge a new path. Clearly, I'm focusing on unity. And this unity looks like consists of empowering police community relations, revitalization of small businesses services, affordable housing that will promote families to acquire and maintain housing in Albany. And I definitely want to make sure that the budgeted funds are allocated to the proper projects. Now, I'm excited about this new voice and your new choice to conquer current issues, adapting to change, to move this city forward. You see, I lived in the Bay Area for now 11 years, and I moved to Albany and immediately got to work. I currently serve to strengthen our community by being elected to the Library Board. I was later appointed to the Social Economic Justice Commission, and I bring 17 years of claims and risk management services where I developed a relationship with the city of Albany. Now, I want to continue to be that advocate. I want to continue to be that leader and mentor that this city needs. And most of all, I want to be that voice of the community that brings out and know that Albany is better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Erin Tiedemann.
Hi there, everybody, and thank you to the League for hosting tonight. I know it's more difficult given COVID, but we're all glad to be here. My name is Erin Tiedemann. I am so excited to be running for Albany City Council because I was born in Albany. I was raised here. I was shaped by Albany. And now my goal since graduating school has been to give back to my community. I've done that through my work with the Economic Development Committee, where I'm currently the vice chair, with my work with Voter Choice Albany, with my work with the Albany Democratic Club, with organizations like Inside Out Albany and others. I also have been working for the past couple of years for the Almeida County Housing Department, where I've been on the forefront of the housing crisis, which gives me a vast amount of experience working on such an important issue. And I hope to bring these all into Albany's government. But I also hope to bring a different perspective than we've had before. I represent a different generational perspective, as well as a different life experience perspective than what we have now of someone who was shaped by Albany but can't afford to live here now and who has been part of a generation that has been told that we have to be ready to face the issues that are becoming increasingly apparent in our world and be ready to face them. That means facing racial justice, climate change, the housing crisis, and many more. So I'm excited to bring that creativity, that energy, and that openness to our city council and bring that new perspective in a year when we have such a chance to elect so many new perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to questions. And if need be, we may...
Preston has not gone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course, I'm so sorry. Please go ahead, Preston Jordan.
Certainly, I've sat in the moderator's seat and I completely understand how that happens, believe me. So thank you very much. I've been working for decades since I arrived in Albany, using my critical thinking skills as a scientist and as an engineer to proactively move the city forward, to reduce risk and advance safety. In 2016, one of the community groups I founded got Measure P1 on the ballot to actually start fixing sidewalks, which you can now see over town, around town and enjoy. This election, two of the groups, other groups I founded, have put Measure DD on the ballot, so you can vote for climate protection and tax fairness, and Measure BB, so you can vote for improving democracy and social justice. I and the groups I work with have been able to do this because we value working together as a community and we follow the science. This is shown by Albany having the second lowest case rate of all 100 and more cities in the Bay Area for COVID-19. Science says the biggest disaster that's facing us is a major earthquake on Haywood Falls. Fortunately, our city has the power to reduce the consequences of that dramatically, which are currently projected to ruin up to one quarter of our homes, both through shaking and fire. Unfortunately, our city council has not made this a priority. It has literally sent staff in 50 different directions at the same time. Somebody who read that this was a priority for me sent me the notes. "I live in a saw story apartment building. Every single night, I am afraid I will die in a quake. I would move if I could afford it, but I can't." So this is an economic justice issue, and this is an issue for you, even if your home is secured, because the fires that will be caused will spread. So I want to make this a priority along with other priorities. I ask you to use two of your three votes for myself and Erin Tiedemann. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And now we'll proceed to questions that have been previously submitted for the candidates. So I will start, I guess, in the same order. So Todd, what do you believe is the most important issue facing the Albany community this coming year?
Oh, there we go. Well, I think that the most important issue is kind of stirring us in the Zoom screen right now, and that is getting through this pandemic and recovery, and then all the consequences of that, such as dramatically reduced city revenue. These are all going to be challenges. I know that the city is already deep in plans trying to chart a path forward, reducing budget and doing the best they can. I have to give the city a great deal of credit for how they responded to the pandemic. I see problems as opportunities. The bigger the problem, the more the opportunity. So I think that the city has already taken advantage of that by moving community development processes online in a way that improves the process for everybody. There's possibly potential opportunities in buildings and property that becomes available, space for new businesses or new housing. So I think that there's a lot that we can do. I'm actually already working with the city, encouraging them to begin recruiting businesses to fill the inevitable vacancies we're going to have when this is all over. So problems are opportunities. The larger the problem, the more is the opportunity. There's a lot here to take advantage of.
Thank you. And Janelle, what do you believe is the most important issue facing the Albany community this coming year?
Thank you. As Todd stated, you know, getting through COVID-19 is one of the biggest priorities, but also dealing with social justice. As a commissioner of the Social Economic Justice, the community wants to hear from our city. They want to hear from our police officers to make sure and ensure that our community is safe. There has been incidents, as we know, worldwide where black and brown women are being killed by police officers, and profiling has been an issue here in Albany. So to me, that is important. I want the community to know that I'm here to fight for them, to make sure that our community is safe, but also encourage them to have that relationship with our police officers during this time. Homelessness is also an issue as well. I mean, couple, like you said, it's an opportunity for us to dive in and start making the changes that we want this city to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Erin, what do you believe is the most important issue facing the Albany community this coming year?
I think it is, it's very hard to identify just one issue because they're all interlinked to some extent. So like Todd and Numbel said, I think COVID is going to be a huge issue going forward, and we need to make sure that we're supporting our residents, protecting them from evictions, as well as supporting businesses that are harmed by COVID. At the same time, while we've been dealing with COVID and in a way that may help our issue with the budget, we've been having this conversation about the place of our police and how to deal with racial justice in Albany. And I think that is going to take up a huge amount of our time for whichever of us get elected, as it should, because our community has been coming out of the woodwork to show their opinions, show their feelings, and share their experiences. And it should be our top priority to respond to those experiences with open minds and with real change, to change how we practice policing and how our city works, to make sure that everyone feels safe. At the same time, I would also say that for many years now, housing has been a huge concern in the Bay Area and in Albany. We need to do more to address our need for affordable housing and the need for housing the homeless. And I think we can do that, but we need to take it seriously and not as a background regional issue that Albany cannot solve or help solve on its own.
Okay. And Preston, what do you believe is the most important issue facing the Albany community this coming year? Oh, you're muted. You're muted.
Thank you so much. I identified it in my opening statement. It's very easy to put off mitigating ahead of time proactively the consequences of a major seismic event year after year, because always seems distant. I'm emphasizing this year in particular because I am hoping that people be more receptive to the message. We've seen that we can have disasters. We've seen that we can have more than one disaster at once. There's always tomorrow for taking the action to start requiring retrofit of saw story buildings, to save lives, to reduce severe injuries, and to save our housing stock. Like, our first goal should be to secure the housing we have. If we lose that housing, the problems that we have will be dramatically accentuated. As said, on the housing front, the biggest opportunity is the San Pablo specific plan that is currently under development. Albany voters responded to Councilmember Pete Moss's request to, via a measure in 2016, to remand off-street parking requirements back to the council. The council reduced those requirements for San Pablo and Solano. So far, there have been zero new housing units proposed on Solano and San Pablo. So we are not succeeding in our goal of producing more housing that addresses and is accessible across the spectrum to rectify Albany's historic exclusion. And our specific plan is our opportunity to do that, so I hope we can come around as a community.
Thank you. All right. Then Todd, what should Albany be doing about the coronavirus?
Do I have to go first every time? Can we rotate?
Oh.
Disadvantage to go first each time.
Sure, sure. Janelle, would you mind answering the question?
Sorry, Janelle.
If you could elaborate a little bit more, what should Albany be doing about the coronavirus? Can I get more information about that?
You can take, you can take the question however, wherever you want to take it.
Okay, sounds good. You know, definitely, I think that we should have testing centers here for our residents. I think that should have been implemented on the onset. A lot of our residents have had to drive into other cities, which is a huge inconvenience, especially to our seniors who are susceptible to this, the disease or pandemic. And so I think if we were to implement testing centers, at least figure out how and where we could get that done. In addition, just, you know, educating, I think, like Todd said, I agree, the city has done a fantastic job with the information and the tools that they had in place. But again, more research is needed, communication is needed. The residents need to feel that there's a plan in place to combat this pandemic and to move the city forward. And so that's what I think that Albany should be doing for the coronavirus. Thank you.
Okay. And then, how about Erin? What should Albany be doing about the coronavirus?
So we're lucky in Albany that we've already done some of what needs to be done. We had a very strong eviction moratorium for residents who could not pay rent due to COVID, which is a crucial step to ensure that people are not caught in a tidal wave of evictions, and we need to keep that up. There's been talk at the city council of letting that lapse, and now the state action has made that even more difficult, but we need to keep our strong protections up. At the same time, as Preston and I have done a little of, working with Albany Inside Out and on our various committees, there needs to be work to provide our businesses with the flexibility they need to continue business in whatever fashion they can. And most recently, that's taken the form of street encroachment permits, which has been very successful for those businesses who can take advantage of it and very widely supported even by businesses who can't. We need to bring that spirit forward into giving the flexibility to businesses and giving them the resources they need. And a large part of that is information. That's the main thing we've been hearing on my committee, the Economic Development Committee, that businesses need up-to-date information from the city about what's going on. So we need to provide that in more ways, provide it more regularly. And lastly, I'd say to respond, we need our leaders to be lobbying at higher levels. The county just has more resources for health, has more resources from the various CARES Act funding, and we need to be advocating for them and our state representatives to be giving that assistance to Albany.
Okay. And Preston, what should Albany be doing about the coronavirus?
First, as I said before, I want to congratulate people because we do have the second lowest case rate in the Bay Area. So I think the residents of Albany deserve some pat on the back for following the science, following the guidelines. I think that's made the difference, and keep doing it, keep it up. I think that messaging from the city and all around is very important. That said, the city is somewhat limited in what it can do because this is really a matter for the county Public Health Department in terms of shelter in place orders. I have valued trying to protect the existence of businesses on Solano. I was very concerned that Solano will effectively become quite vacant. And I think it's noteworthy that when those businesses joined the volunteer program Albany Inside Out and they wanted to get some accommodations from government, they came to Erin on the Economic Development Committee and myself on the Transportation Commission, asking if we could work with them towards advancing some recommendations to the city council to make that program more successful, which we were able to do. And on the Economic Development Committee, there are representatives of Solano Avenue Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and somewhat shockingly, they abstain from making those recommendations to the city council, even though tens of businesses are involved in this program and really we're relying on it as a lifeline. So the city can be an important partner with the businesses and maintain that vitality of Solano that we all love.
Okay, thank you. And now Todd, what should Albany be doing about the coronavirus?
Well, I too want to spend a moment just saying what I think the city has done well, and I think the city responded very quickly. The Recreation and Community Services Department quickly shifted gears and have provided thousands of meals, I think 7,000 meals to our seniors out of the senior center, 350 bags of groceries out of the senior center. The Community Development Department has moved online, which is going to be something that's good going forward. There's been a lot of really good things from the staff. Kudos to the staff. We were talking to the Community Development Department about the encroachments permits for businesses weeks before Albany Inside Out started. I just want to make that very clear, and started that ball rolling. The truth was, the encroachment permits were there from the start. Nothing needed to be added. They just made it more obvious. We pushed for them to promote it and to advertise it. I too would have liked, or would like to see, an additional testing facility in the city. I think maybe the CVS parking lot would be good. We have testing facilities, but you need a prescription. And we need one that people just kind of drop in. I think the closest one, and it's intermittent, is in Berkeley. I am happy about the eviction moratorium, both for businesses and for residents, but for both those situations, that money is going to have to be made up, and that's a challenge that a lot of people are not really going to have to be struggling with. So I just want to finish by saying that I think the city has done a very good job, and there's still more to do identifying how to recover going forward and how to turn this problem into an opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, before I ask the next question, I just want to remind the attendees that you may still ask questions by using the Q and A button if you have those. So now to question number three. Why don't we start with Erin? What is your position on Prop 15, which will increase taxes on commercial properties? And why do you have that position?
I support Prop 15. I think we should absolutely increase taxes on commercial properties. I think our, the property base of California has long been out of whack due to our previous amendments to the state constitution, and Prop 15 works to correct some of that. Those property taxes obviously need to be progressive. This is something that Preston and I have lobbied for, of making Albany's tax base more progressive, to making it so that our parcel taxes don't charge properties like Target, same as they would single-family homes. So I think this is an important step in the right direction and gives more resources for undertaking the sorts of projects that we need to, to improve the state.
Okay, thank you very much. And Preston, what is your position on Prop 15, which will increase taxes on commercial properties, and why that position?
So my former role, actually, as a board member of the League of Women Voters, I did some research on this and looked at some large properties in our area, the Chevron refinery and Golden Gate Fields, which has 100 acres, and found that those are assessed at less than $200,000 per acre. By comparison, property in the city of Albany on this side of the freeway, the east side of the freeway, is assessed at a value of over $1 million an acre. That's unimproved, without the improvements. So I support Proposition 15. I wouldn't support it if it didn't have protections in it for smaller commercial property owners who don't have the same kinds of resources or responsibility to our society, I would say. But it does have those protections for those small property owners. And to pick up on what Erin was saying, Measure EE, which is on our ballot, this is an Albany measure, is kind of a step backwards. I mean, it's sort of a form of Prop 13 for Albany, if you will. It proposes to charge the owner of a condominium, one-bedroom, may it be, the same as the owner of a five-bedroom house, which does exist in Albany, and charge Target and Golden Gate Fields only twice that amount. Fiscally, not responsible, because we could raise more revenue by taxing each property fairly based on building square footage, and it's economically unjust. So fortunately, we can move in the right direction with the state proposition, but we're moving the wrong direction with the city. Thanks.
Thank you. So Janelle, could you answer to the question of what is your position on Prop 15 and which will increase taxes on commercial properties, and why you've taken that position?
Yes, thank you. I would agree with the taxes on commercial properties. You know, the projects are defined in support of Prop 15. My only concern is would the small businesses have to bear the brunt of that proposition? Our small businesses are struggling right now, and Albany is trying to increase the visibility and the market in our small businesses. So, you know, I'm all for that the big businesses and commercials would have to take ownership of paying their fair share of taxes, but I don't want it to affect the small businesses in our community that will continue to drive businesses away. So that's my stance on it.
Okay, thank you. And Todd? Same question. What is your position on Prop 15, which will increase taxes on commercial properties, and why do you take that position?
Well, I certainly support Prop 15. I thought that Prop 13 in general needs to be reviewed for a long time, and I very strongly is very excited to see this. I do share the concerns about the impact on our local business community. There are already what I'm going to describe as out-of-touch landlords. Usually, these are children of the original property owners who now live out of state or something. They're not really in touch, and they're charging San Francisco-style rates for commercial property spaces here in Albany. And it's just unsustainable. It's scaring people away. It's chasing people away. So I am concerned about that, but I have to say, all in all, by and large, this is a step to make up for the shortcomings of Prop 13. I can just say that, you know, when I moved into my house, we paid the previous owner's property tax bill. It was $800. Then we got our property tax bill. It was over $9,000. So there's clearly a problem there that to be resolved. And this is at least a step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so our next question is, I'm going to start with Janelle. So Janelle, is there systemic, oh, I'm sorry, I keep skipping you. Preston?
It's only fair.
Yeah, oh, I don't know. But so what is your position on Prop 15, which will increase taxes on commercial properties? And why?
I'm sorry, actually, we're throwing confusion at you. I haven't answered a question first yet. So I think it's only fair that, I think the other three have answered a question first, so I think it's my turn.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you answered Prop 13. Okay, question number four. You may be the first to answer it. Is there systemic racism within our police force, schools, and community? And if so, how will you address it?
So I'm a data-driven guy, being a scientist and engineer, and we don't have a lot of data to work on. We have incidents that have occurred that indicate there is systemic racism. I did analysis of past Albany election results with this in mind, using the methods that are dictated essentially by U.S. Supreme Court decisions for analyzing whether there is systemic racism in elections, and in fact, in Albany, there is. In particular, because of the election method we use, voters of color cannot elect their candidate of choice when they prefer a different candidate than white voters in the city. And most of the elections that I looked at, in fact, they have referred at least one candidate different than the white majority, and they have not been able to elect that candidate. So from that perspective, I would say there is systemic racism, and it's a prime example of systemic racism in that no individual voter needs to be consciously racist for that outcome to occur. And we see that in our councils. I mean, we have the largest community of color in Albany, are Asian-Americans, and we have one Asian-American on council in decades. He's the only person of color. That's why I worked for 12 years to get Measure BB on the ballot, so we could actually have social justice in our city council and bring more perspectives to our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now Aaron, is there systemic racism within our police force, schools, and community? And if so, how will you address it?
There absolutely is systemic racism. I believe Brian Doss was the one who said in one of our community meetings that racism doesn't skip towns. That's true of Albany. That's true of everywhere. And you can look at any facet of our society to find that there is systemic racism. I think responding to that, as Preston noted, part of that is changing our election method to make it more fair. And that's a crucial step because representation in our government is vital. But I also think that means that once we have gone through the election, once we have people in place, they need to be willing to consider alternatives that may break the norm, that may be, you know, outside of what we've considered in the past, and that go beyond. And that means that in the context of the moment we're in, where the focus of this conversation is on policing, that means being willing to consider reducing the role of police in our society, of taking responsibilities from police and putting them onto mental health professionals or other community service workers. And that's what we need to do to respond because, as I mentioned, so many people have come forward and shared their experiences, and we need to do right by them and show that we are making real change. There's a lot of other places that we need to make this change because systemic racism is so ingrained in many parts of our culture. And Albany, as much as we like to think, is not immune to that. But I think it comes down to having council and leaders who are willing to think of those bold changes and think of systemic change. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Todd, is there systemic racism within our police force, schools, and community? And if so, how will you address it?
I don't think we can really deny for a moment that there isn't systemic racism within Albany and all aspects of Albany. You don't have to go back, shockingly, very far to find overt racism in Albany. I mean, it's maybe even into the 80s. It's really quite shocking. How do we address it? Well, I agree, we need much more diversity in our leadership at all levels. I think that the way we do that is that we begin proactively recruiting voices from diverse communities into our committees and to our commissions. We go out, we reach out, we identify these folks, and we invite them to serve a role in a committee or commission. And that, right away, brings a different perspective. That's appointed. It's not voted. And that's a path to council. So they find out if they like it. They may not be interested after serving for a term in a, on a committee or commission, or they might really respond and find they want to move forward. It allows them to learn the structure and the way the city works and move forward, and it's a pathway to council. So I think that's how we actually introduce diversity into our leadership. And as Aaron and others have mentioned, that can't help but change the city at a fundamental level. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So Janelle, is there systemic racism within our police force, schools, and community? And if so, oh, how will you address it?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the other candidates here for addressing that question and agreeing that there is systemic racism in our community. You know, first, we have to unify. We have to communicate, and we have to hold the ones in power accountable for their actions. We can't just say we're a part of a group that represents something that the world believes in, and we don't take action, i.e. black lives matter. You can't say that black lives matter when you won't put blacks on your board. You can't say black lives matter when you're not educating and making sure the same resources that are afforded to others are clearly afforded to those of black and brown people. So yes, if we're continuing to keep black and brown people at, from coming to the seat and having a seat at the table, we'll never get past the systemic racism. We have a cross that's up there that represents something that for years have continued to tuck this community, and we're still dealing with the ramifications of that. So in order for us to step up and hold those that are accountable for their actions, we have to unite, and communication is key. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for the next question, we will start with Aaron. And that question is, what are your positions on the three tax measures in Albany and why?
So on three tax measures in Albany, I believe Preston and I wrote the opposition to the parcel tax measure because it is a regressive tax. As we've stated earlier, we are in favor of progressive tax measures, something that Albany has not done in the past, even though it needs to. On the subject of climate tax, I'm very much in support of that. Haven't been as involved in that as Preston has, and he'll be happy to talk about that. But I definitely think we need more money to respond to the threat of climate change effectively as a city. And I think that tax measure is a great way to do that. I have not taken a position on the third tax measure.
Okay, thank you. And Todd, what are your positions on the three tax measures in Albany and why?
So I also strongly support the utility users tax, and I kudos to Preston and Aaron for bringing that forward. I do support Measure EE. I understand that, you know, it's not a progressive tax, but I'm, again, we're in this situation of being a pragmatic progressive where I understand that it's not a huge amount of money. It could be perfect. We could hold out and make it perfect, but this is good. This is a step forward, and I think this is one that we can, we can take. So in general, I am in support of the tax measures in this campaign. Miss Luchin.
Thank you. And now, Janelle, what are your positions on the three tax measures in Albany and why?
Okay, thank you for that question. You know, I, I would like to see a stream of revenue that will offset constantly putting the burden on the residents to pay for taxes, to fund projects or the city. I really think that we should dive deep into getting that in our city so we won't keep having to push the burden on the house, on the households and families in our city. So during this time where, you know, we're in COVID, people are losing their jobs, people are losing that source and strength of income that's coming in, you know, I just don't think it's time for the measure, the housing tax. I just think that we should revisit that at a later date and let us get through COVID. It's time for us to rebuild and not to continue to tax our residents. The tax measure for the utility tax, I do support that. I think that it has some inconsistencies, I believe, but I think if the tax is utilized and the funds are utilized in the way it should be, it will be fine. And if elected, I will make sure that those funds are being directed to making sure that we move forward in our climate change actions. And then finally, the, our police and ambulance service, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. Now Preston, what are your positions on these tax measures in Albany and why?
So as Aaron mentioned, we wrote the opposition argument to Measure EE, which is the flat parcel tax to support advanced life support. And in terms of perfect being the enemy of the good, we provided the council information that the city of Berkeley and other cities, but the voters of the city of Berkeley in March passed two taxes per building square foot by over 80%. So it was wildly popular. The council refused to act. We presented that the city would actually get more money at less cost per residence if it taxed fairly, if it taxed commercial at the same rate that it taxes residents. The council refused to act. So at some point, enough is enough. This is a forever tax. There is no sunset to this tax. So it needs to be opposed so that we can get to the progressive taxes we should have. I worked 10 years to get the utility user tax on the ballot. One-third of that funding is recommended for climate protection, which the Albany voters value. It will also provide a tax cut, an actual tax cut, to low-income households. So it's kind of the best of both worlds, and obviously, it's a tax that is somewhat progressive at least because the tax is based on what people use. The property transfer tax, while small, our neighboring cities have passed with wild popular support a progressive tax measure. And again, our council has presented that and simply refused to ask, to act. So we need a progressive council that will take what other cities are doing and put it into action.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll start with Todd again. What will you do about the current housing homelessness situation in Albany if you are elected? Where would you put new housing?
Well, that's the real question, isn't it? Fortunately, there is housing development going in down by Pier Street Park, which was land originally slated for the public yard that became available when the public yard found in their location. And that's very exciting, but it, you know, it's a drop in the bucket to what's needed. We see, we've seen directly the homelessness issue increase over the last, I'm going to say, three months. You know, I walk with the Blue Glove Crew three days a week around the street, and we've seen a lot more activity on the street, either people sleeping in doorways or other signs of homeless activity, people experiencing homelessness. So what can we do? Well, we're a small town with small, you know, few resources. We, you know, just, we can't throw money at something. We have, I think, a good relationship with Berkeley Food and Housing that we've continued, and I think that we should expand that. I think that we should take advantage of some of the opportunities that are present ourselves, be presented to us with properties that become available to find developers that can build facilities that could help people experiencing homelessness. And I guess that's what I'm going to finish with.
Okay, thank you very much. And Janelle, what will you do about the current housing and homeless situation in Albany if you are elected? And where would you put new housing?
You know, thank you for that question. Again, I always like to thank you for seeing these questions. Because in a perfect world, you know, I would like to see more resources, and I know we're a small town. You know, I want Albany to be the leader in making sure that we are attacking this issue. I know we go to other cities like Berkeley to, you know, use some of their resources, like Berkeley Food and Housing, but we have a lot of unclaimed property that we can utilize and open up to have certain resources there. We have the showers program that that's available. But housing in general, I think that if we have more resources, and as a small community, again, we will be able to find housing for all, right, unclaimed property. We also have, I would like to see a land trust where people can, you know, put that money in and be able to afford property, get property, right? We want people to own housing. We don't want them sleeping on our streets. But we also want to make sure we're taking care of our community as a whole. So just doing the research, making sure that we're partnering with property owners that may want to sell and give us that property to house some of our unhoused community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Preston, what will you do about the current housing homelessness situation in Albany if you're elected? And where would you put new housing?
So there's both a short term and a long term to this, obviously. The long term I alluded to earlier, which is the San Pablo specific plan. We need a greater spectrum of housing by price, and Albany has an inclusionary housing policy so that 15% of new housing that is built needs to be affordable. And that's not necessarily going to be at the level that somebody who is currently experiencing homelessness is able to afford. But the housing crisis in terms of costs that we've created has certainly contributed to the problem of people being unhoused. And so we need, as a community, to really make it possible for developers to develop those properties. And the market has spoken, and it's said, not good enough, Albany, because those applications are not coming forward. So I actually live in the northern part of Albany, not far from the BART station. I think there needs to be much more development in this area. There was a state bill that actually would have upzoned where I live, which obviously would have had an impact on my neighborhood. But I support that bill. I live within a half mile of BART, and we're only going to get there if we create more residences in places like where I live. In the short term, this is an opportunity to do what Aaron mentioned earlier, which is to potentially offboard some of the current services that the police provide to essentially a mental health corps. The city of Eugene, Oregon, did that in 1989 and has had great success so that we don't have to pioneer it. There are other cities that have done it, and we can learn from their track record and get it done.
Thank you. And Aaron, what will you do about the current housing homelessness situation in Albany if you're elected? And where would you put new housing?
So housing is my personal number one issue. It's what I do for my day job, so I have a lot of ideas on housing. I think the San Pablo Avenue specific plan process so far has been very encouraging because our planning commission has been willing to decrease parking requirements and increase the height. That means that we can get more density and more affordable housing on this underdeveloped thoroughfare. I think the same goes for Solano, if we can have a lot more housing on Solano. But as Preston said, we can also upzone or make more flexible our requirements in the rest of the single-family zoned areas of Albany. He alluded to SB 50, which is a bill I track from my job. That sort of legislation was defeated this time, but it's not going to go away if cities like Albany continue to say no to housing and continue to say no to making things easier to develop. So unless we want the state to do it for us, we need to be taking strong action. One of my other huge priorities is to pass an affordable housing bond at the city level in Albany. We've expended the last of our Measure A1 county funding on the affordable housing project that Todd mentioned, which is a great project, but with only about $2.5 million, we were able to allow that project to unlock a whole host of other state and federal funding. Fairly small affordable housing bond at the city level. We can spread that money through a couple other projects to make other projects possible to get that funding. And just to finish off, as Preston said, there are more resources we can devote to And just to finish off, as Preston said, there are more resources we can devote to homeless services if we take a look at our budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then for the next question, we will start with Janelle. How will you work to address the climate crisis in the city of Albany? Albany is particularly vulnerable to rising water levels. What can we do?
You know, being uh, born in Texas, experiencing hurricanes, we, we um, experienced that water levels flooding. Um, that was something we experienced on a regular basis. In the city of Gauss in Texas, they build um, a wall barrier and I'm, and I'm just giving an example. They build a wall to stop the, the flooding for coming in, destroying, you know, the city, the property and things like that. And for the most case, um, it has worked. Um, I wouldn't say build something as, as big as a wall. Um, I know we don't wanna use wall that word, but something that will um, help us to make sure that we're protecting our residents. There has to be um, testing uh, for, for barriers to stop the flooding, right? And we just have to make sure that we're doing everything we can to um, increase the research and um, looking for new ways, innovative ways to prevent flooding and the rise of water to come into our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, Preston, how will you work to address the climate crisis in the city of Albany? Albany is particularly vulnerable to rising water levels. What can we do?
So I've been, I founded a, a community group um, around this, which then merged into Albany Climate Action Coalition. Um, as has been mentioned, we were instrumental in getting measure DD on the ballot to actually fund climate protection. I wanna commend Albany and the people of Albany. We made our first greenhouse pollution reduction goal this year, uh, which not many cities did. But now comes the harder part, which is making the next goal. And we need to collectively fund that because it's nobody's fault if they use natural gas, for instance, in their home to heat water, to heat the space. And so we need to come together to fund it converting that um, away from natural gas. And in that regard, we can be a leader. So this idea of using utility taxes as a tax on natural gas and electricity to fund reducing greenhouse pollution was invented in Albany. And we have now socialized that Berkeley has actually followed us this time. And so measure AHH and Berkeley follows that model this election. And numerous other cities are looking at this. With regard to sea level rises, it's not necessarily a problem Albany can or should solve on its own. It's certainly gonna happen because our civilization hasn't taken action. But we need leaders who are gonna work regionally for another tax, like the first regional tax that was passed on property some years ago for well and restoration, to actually do and pay for what is needed to be done to protect our coastal cities in this area, a nine-county tax.
Thank you. And now Aaron, how will you work to address the climate crisis in the city of Albany? Albany is particularly, particularly vulnerable to rising water levels. What can we do?
So climate change is obviously a, a huge issue for me. My generation has grown up being told that it is our responsibility to solve climate change because it's going to be seen most effectively in our lifetimes. Like, we can all see that in the past couple of weeks, it's being seen in all of our lifetimes a little bit more than we expected. Uh, and as I've made clear on the committee I currently sit on, when the climate uh, plan came before our committee, uh, what we need to do centers on keeping climate at the fore of everything we do and viewing our response as Albany is not what can we do as just one small city, but how can we be a part of the solution and do what everyone needs to be doing uh, in this collective action problem in order to address the crisis? So that means keeping a firm goal in mind on our climate action plan. Those are good goals, but they're going to need continued tension to meet uh, as well as taking actions like passing the utility users tax, which is on our ballot this year, specifically on the waterfront. Uh, that's going to mean advocating so that we can hopefully turn parts of the waterfront back into wetlands, which is the most effective way of mitigating sea level rise. Uh, that's how we can protect our coast. Um, but as I said, climate change is such a huge issue and so it requires us taking a look at it in every facet of what we do and not looking at it as we can't solve this issue alone, but viewing it as we are not solving this issue alone. We are solving it as a part of the greater community.
Todd, how will you work to address the climate crisis in the city of Albany? Albany is particularly vulnerable to rising water levels. What can we do?
So I, I wanna talk a little bit about process. I mean, um, I, I support and, and have studied the, the Albany's climate action adaptation plan, but, but I wanna talk a little bit about getting people engaged and, and getting buy-in and, and the things that we're gonna need to do to meet our goal. I mean, the good news is, uh, and people of Albany have shown this over and over, the business people I've talked to in Albany have shown this over and over, they want to do the right thing. They're willing to do the right thing, but they need to feel that it's fair. Uh, they need to, we need to make it as easy as possible. We need to bring as many people into this conversation as we can. And that's not gonna happen if we keep running meetings the way we're running them. We need to be more proactive. We need to have much more proactive communication. Uh, when I was on the Parks and Rec Commission, we, we uh, kind of modeled a system for reaching out to the community over a very divisive issue. And in the end, the resolution was, was, was very, uh, supported pretty much by all sides because we did proactively reach out. We went door to door, we knocked on doors, we talked to people. And that's the sort of effort I think it's gonna take in order to get some of these things done that we're talking about, uh, changing the zoning, um, uh, building uh, high, you know, much higher uh, density housing in the middle of a residential neighborhood. That's not something that people all of you are gonna embrace unless we have a much larger conversation and bring everybody into the topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for our next question, uh, we will start with Preston. How will measure BB and ranked choice voting for council members address racism? How will it bring in new candidates and represent marginalized voices and issues that have not been addressed in the past?
So this is a, a method, a proportional ranked choice voting that was used in over twenty cities mid-last century. And the history shows that under this system, uh, black people were elected to council for the first time in many of those cities. Um, other underrepresented political perspectives were elected to council in those cities. So it has a track record of success. It was actually that track record of success that led to its demise because the white majority in those cities, whether Republican or Democrat, it didn't matter. They did not like losing power. And so they fought again and again and again. Some cities up to six, seven times to repeal it. So that is how effective it is. And it is effective because it is proportional. So voters of color in Albany, should they choose to support a candidate of their choice, they will have the numbers to be able to do it under this method. I'm not necessarily a big fan, as a white person, of going out and recruiting people. To me, that smacks of being a white savior. This method will make it and history shows that communities of color will find their own leaders and they will put them forward once this method comes into effect because they know that they will be able to win. Um, an example of our current system not working was the candidacy of Eric Deason Fields. He was the Black Planning and Zoning Commissioner. He won with voters of color, but he lost the election to Michael Barnes.
Okay. Thank you. And Aaron, how will measure BB and ranked choice voting for council members address racism? How will it bring in new candidates and represent marginalized voices and issues that have not been addressed in the past?
So, uh, Preston and I have obviously been very vocal in our support of measure BB because we are two of the lead organizers for Voter Choice Albany, the group that, that organized to put it on the ballot. Essentially, ranked choice voting will solve our problem in that it will make voting for city council less lopsided and make it possible for all of the concerns and the perspectives, backgrounds and people of color to be represented in our community. Our current system means that it is far more likely that one group will elect all of the seats uh, instead of allowing any other group to. And while this seems simple and effective, it means that voices are being locked out of power. And as Preston said, uh, it means that candidates preferred by people of color are not elected because the majority takes all those votes and takes all the seats and locks anyone else out. It's a detriment to any other perspective. It's a detriment to anyone who's not represented on the city council. Uh, whereas using proportional ranked choice voting avoids uh, separating to districts, which would not solve our problem, uh, and institutes a much fairer means of electing for everyone. It makes each person's vote more powerful uh, to vote for and to ensure that they have someone on the city council who represents them and who represents their community.
Thank you. And Todd, how will measure BB and ranked choice voting for council members address racism? How will it bring in new candidates and represent marginalized voices and issues that have not been addressed in the past?
Well, I'm pretty confident in saying I'm the only candidate here who's neutral on this measure. I'm not opposed to it. I, uh, I like ranked choice voting in general. I like it in, in uh, state and primaries, what, what have you, larger elections. Our problem in Albany isn't, uh, our problem in Albany, or the problem here is, is Albany, not ranked choice voting. Our problem is engagement. Um, I, I've, I've looked at the raw voter rolls and, you know, thirty percent, thirty, forty percent of the folk, people in Albany who vote, don't even vote for his local council election. Don't even vote, place a vote uh, on the local election. So our problem is, is, is people being engaged and, and, and running for office and then being aware of the issues. I don't think that the issue that we're, we're challenged, challenging us is solved by ranked choice voting. I think it's solved by bringing more voices in, inviting more voices in, reaching out in the community and letting everybody know that these opportunities exist, inviting them to serve on a commission or a committee. And I'm not choosing people, I'm just making it known that these exist. And it's not a big time commitment. Um, I would like to, you know, be curious to, to go out and, and ask the community, how many people know what it takes to be on a committee or commission? It's not that big of a commitment. And through this method, we can reach out and make it more attractive, more appealing, find ways to get engagement. And that's the pathway to, uh, to the council. By and large, the one thing that matters in an Albany election is experience. If you can say you've served on a committee or commission, uh, I mean, Aaron, Aaron knows this. Um, he's, he's joined a commission in order to gain this experience to prepare him for council. That's how you move on. And so if you bring people in at that level, then they move up and they can take over on, on.
Okay, thank you. And now, Janelle, how will measure BB and ranked choice voting for council members address racism? How will it bring in new candidates and represent marginalized voices and issues that have not been addressed in the past?
Thank you. I, I had that same exact question myself. Um, I don't see how it will address uh, race, racism. Uh, you have three white men and one black woman sitting here in four years. And I'm passionate about running and being the voice for my community. So at the end of the day, um, if you're not educating, if we're not recruiting actively, mentoring people to come in and take office, are we reaching to the next generation, encouraging them to be on commissions? And at the end of the day, who's looking at the applications? Are we picking our friends? Are we picking future leaders that can be on the ballot? What about the cost of implementing such a, a voter's registry, a ranked choice uh, voting? Twenty thousand dollars? So that, where are we getting that money from? Is that coming from the taxpayers? So we cannot continue to implement policies, procedures, acts uh, for feel-good unless we have sound, recorded information and documentation that we have done these things and they have not worked. And so I'm not against it, but at the end of the day, I need to know more to be for it. I need to know more to have a solid position on how this ranked choice voting can stop racism. And my answer is that it cannot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I had hoped that I could have um, warned everyone that that was the final question that we had time for, but didn't quite come together and I didn't wanna break up everyone's uh, response to the question altogether. So this will conclude our um, question component. And now I want to tell you a little bit before we, we have the candidates give their final statements. So before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the LWVBAE. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, pros and cons and positions on ballot measures, please visit the League's website, lvvbae.org or votersedge.org/ca. We invite you to join the League to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. Visit our website and social media accounts at LWVBAE. The deadline to register to vote is October ninth this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Remember to vote by mail or at the polls by Tuesday, November third. Now the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with, which means we will uh, start with Preston. And each candidate will give a closing statement for one minute.
Thank you, and thank you to the League. Having moderated these events, I know what it takes and I really appreciate your doing so to you and all those people who are behind the scenes, I know, working away. Aaron and I are the only candidates that are endorsed by the Albany Democratic Club, the Yalene County Democratic Party and the Sierra Club in combination. And that is because we manifest the values that are held by the voters of Albany. I have talked about emergency preparedness and this is not just a water barrel in a yard. If you're able to have one, this is about actually making our buildings safe. I've worked on climate protection. I've worked on economic justice. We need a council that will provide staff with the priorities it needs to move on those items that are most important. Not a strategic plan like the council currently has, but fifty items with no prioritization. Thank you for voting for us.
Thank you. Next, we shall hear from Aaron Tiedemann.
So thank you to the League. Thank you for everyone who made this happen. Thank you to my fellow candidates and everyone who else who attended. Uh, it's very hard to get involved these days, but I think it's great that everyone has the energy to do so. Um, as Preston said, uh, we together, I think, form a very strong candidacy. Um, we have complementing ideas, complementing approaches, uh, and complementing experience. Uh, we've given you a taste tonight of uh, what sort of values we have and what issues we'd like to focus on. Uh, I think if you want to see our city council with the energy, the creativity, uh, the ability to consider new ideas that go outside of the norm but fix the challenges that we are increasingly facing now, uh, I think we are a good ticket to do so. Uh, and I'm very excited to take this opportunity that this election affords to get uh, new voices into our city council and new energetic leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Janelle?
Thank you. I wanna thank you again for inviting me to this forum. I really enjoyed the conversation, the dialogue with all the candidates that are presented here tonight. You know, I wanna say that I'm excited to conquer these pressing issues. I'm about building. It's time to rebuild Albany. COVID will not take effect, will not have any effect on the growth and the maturity and the visibility that the city can have, and I know it can have. The community just needs a voice like mine to be a champion for them, to stand up for what they believe in, to bring this city back on track. Although I am new, but I am ready to work. I've been here working and I enjoy my time rebuilding this city. The time is now. Let this new voice be your first choice. I'm Janelle Gary. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. And now, Todd?
I want to add my voice to the thanks. I, I know these things are not easy to do and I appreciate your efforts very much. I just wanna leave you with the three things I mentioned that I want you to remember about me. Um, I've had more than fourteen years of experience and, and knowledge of the Albany local business community and that's something that we need on council, particularly as we experience what we're going through now with the pandemic and as we work to recover. I'm working with the city right now on, on, on addressing issues regarding uh, the businesses. My agenda is about increasing engagement. That means increasing communication. It means increasing transparency. It means reaching out into our community. It means knocking on doors and educating folks and inviting them to be part of this process. I don't hold it against anybody if they have different priorities, but we're only going to make the progress we need when we can increase our engagement. And finally, I have a plan to proactively increase diversity in the council and at all levels of local government. And that's something, diversity is strength. We work better when we work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Please join me in a round of applause. I mean, you might use your little response things for all of our candidates. And thank you all for attending. Good night.